All right, yeah, we're starting. Good to see you. Well, starting soon.
Can I get locked in? You know, my IT company is pretty bad.
All right, let's go ahead and start the regular city council meeting of April 24th, 2023. I'll go ahead and call the meeting into order. Roll call, please.
Morris? Larson?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Perkins?
Here.
McAdams?
Here.
Verbic?
Here.
Favor?
Here.
Mayor Barnes?
Here.
Seven aye.
And Alderwoman Morris let me know she was not going to be here in advance. All right, with that, I would take, oh, pledge of allegiance. Could I have Captain Voluntary Action Center come up and lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Gentry. All right, moving on to agenda item C, approval of the agenda. I would take a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderman McAdams. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven aye.
All right, the agenda has been approved. Moving on to agenda item D, presentations. All right. Let's make sure we take plenty of time. Jeff, you got the spotlight on him. If you could zoom in, that would be great. As much as, maybe some lights we can have on there, but I want to take a moment and honor Tony Favor, our alderman, who has spent numerous years serving our council. And I know City Manager has some comments. I would open up for any comments from council, and then I have some remarks as well. So City Manager, you want to kick us off?
Yes, sir. I'll lead off, and what I have to say pales in relation to what the city owes you and your very, very professional and very dedicated service. I said in my background, it's been almost seven and a half years. You probably know the days. And I just want people who are listening in tonight to hear this if they haven't read the background. Certainly, you've served through some tough times and some good times, recession, pandemic. You've been very instrumental in promoting fiscal responsibility. It's been one of your keystones. And as well as a very responsive government, high on your list, public safety has been high on your list. You've been instrumental with other members of the council in transforming our economy, local economy, particularly in the industrial sector. And you're very interested, and I think not every agenda gives you the opportunity to act on this, but a family-centered kind of entertainment, what we can do for people of all ages, to attract people to come and stay and make this their home. And you've, in all these ways, brought much value to the discourse that this council and earlier councils have engaged in. In behalf of all of the city staff, the appointed people who worked for the government during your tenure, I want to say thank you enormously for your good service.
Counsel, before I make a comment, I don't know if anyone else, Alderman McAdams.
So I think the words that come to mind are stoic leadership. And when I came to council, I found that I could always turn to Tony for the right answer, the best answer, the best possible solution. And he was the first one that explained to me that there's no such thing as problems, they're all possibilities. And to think of it that way. And it was one of those eye-opening things that I really stood out when I started. So thank you for your service.
Anyone else? Hearing none. So we go back years. Tony and I used to go on many runs when he was alderman early on, and he would just educate me and share with me what everything was going on in the city. As I aged, because he looks a lot better than I do, running turned to walking. And I can't tell you how many Saturday mornings he would spend an hour, two hours, three hours, walking the city. We'd pick up trash together constantly and continue to share with me, well before I was mayor, on just all the goings on in the city. And then I had multiple roles within the community, and I would share boots on the ground, what's happening in the various organizations that I was a part of. And definitely formed a tight friendship. I remember when Mayor Ray was asking about who to appoint to that, to the Seventh Ward, and Tony's name was thrown in the hat, and I advocated and supported my friend, but also someone that I knew who was a dedicated member of DeKalb. And I don't even know how many generations you all go back, but a lot of generations, and that perspective, I think was important to the city of DeKalb, moving it forward. Being mayor now and being on council with Alderman Favor, the thing I appreciate most is how you always take the time to choose your words, but you always say them. Every agenda item, no matter how contentious, how many people showed up in opposition, your thoughts were measured, your thoughts were very thoughtful, and they represented the perspective of someone who grew up here and lived his life here and raised a family here, and you never hesitated to express it. Most of you don't know, but I could see a little handshake sometimes, because what you all don't realize is when you're up here, it's different than being down there. And the accusations that get thrown at us, the snide comments that get thrown at us, the attacks on us personally, whether it's at a council meeting or offline, it's a lot. And sometimes saying the right thing is hard, but we all up here, we're elected to be up here and do the best job we possibly can and represent the people of DeKalb, not only our individual wards, but the people of DeKalb in every decision that we make. And I gotta give Alderman Favor a ton of credit, because every decision and every comment that you ever made, I believe, fully weighed and was thoughtful on that particular item. And you always express where you stood from your constituents, but also where you stood from your heart. And that is absolutely true leadership. And I can't say enough about how respectful you've been in your role. There's different opinions up here. We have spirited dialogue on and off of council. But Alderman Favor always listened, always took someone's perspective to heart, made sure that if he needed to deviate, he might, based off of the arguments that he heard. And that's something we lack these days. So I can't say enough. You're the epitome of what an alderperson should be. You've got some huge shoes that you're leaving unfilmed. And I have a lot of confidence our next alderperson is going to slide right in there, Alderman Walker. But thank you for all of your service. Thanks for showing the leadership that you did, and thanks for your service of the community, Alderman Favor. How about a round of applause for this man? All right. And it wouldn't be complete without a wonderful plaque. So I'd love to present this to Alderman Favor, and why don't we all come down, get a great picture. Scott, you mind taking a photo? All right, beautiful. Come on.
Sit her up here.
Yeah. Feel the mic throw.
All righty. Three, two, one.
Good job.
One more.
That's right, that's right.
Mine's bigger than yours. So this is traditional as well, sorry.
You're good.
And so Favor Way. And that's often what it says, but I think it's particularly out here. I just hope all of us can follow the Favor Way. Kindness, thoughtfulness, and dedication.
You know what, staff, come on. This guy served seven years. Can everyone come up? Let's get a picture. There's a little gray on his wall frame when he reminisces about the seven wonderful years he served.
You all have to be, no.
We all know, short people in front, I don't know, I think maybe that's me, I don't know. Recording secretary, you know where you're at. Oh, we gotta switch, we gotta switch in even more, you got us, yeah. Are we good? All right, smiles, everybody.
All right. Three, two, one. Very good. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Alderman Favor, any parting thoughts or words?
I'll try and get through them.
You want me to get some tissue in my bag?
Yeah. It has been, it has been an honor to serve the residents of the Seventh Ward and the city of DeKalb over the past seven-plus years. I want to say thank you to you, the city staff, city attorney, executive assistant Ruth Scott, the best city manager Bill, present council members and past council members, and the three mayors that I've served with, especially Mayor Colin Barnes. Together, we've made transformational changes to create a business-friendly climate, more efficient city operations, and an attractive downtown. In a nod to former Chief Lowry, I feel I am leaving DeKalb in a better position than when I attended my first council meeting in December of 2015. As I pass the Seventh Ward baton to Alderman-elect John Walker, I know there is still much work to be done. You are all well-positioned to continue to build upon the foundation that others have labored before you. Remember the core services of the city: fire, police, public works. Excel at these items and then branch out to provide for the other community needs. Thank you very much.
As always, well said, sir. All right, agenda item E, public participation. Bill Callahan. And Bill, as always, and I know you know, you have three minutes. And you have a fancy timer up.
I wish some of them had actually made that.
Yeah.
Just so you know, usually when somebody lets me have a microphone, the first thought is, uh-oh. It's not one of those nights. Thank you for your services. You're one of the few families in DeKalb that outnumber the Callahans. One of the few. So elections are always difficult at times. We saw some mud flinging, including in this room. But everybody did what they should have done, and the results show that. What was on your yard sign? You had one thing written on the bottom of your yard signs that just made me think of this group of people.
Looking forward?
Yeah. The work that you do is immeasurable. People don't understand, I come to these meetings all the time, they don't understand what everybody does and the thoughts and everything else goes into it. And I wish people would show up for these meetings. They'd see real leadership. When the gentleman was here, he was very upset, screaming because of, you know. You came off of the stage, shook his hand, and said, "Let's sit down and talk about this."
We did. We met for breakfast at the Junction.
That's leadership. That's what it's all about. Zack? When the work was being done downtown, I went through downtown. I have customers downtown. There wasn't a time I didn't see Zack out there supervising. And the work that you did on Fairview, it's working exactly the way you said it would. Thank you. He doesn't always get the attention he deserves, but tonight he does. Is my three minutes up?
Yeah, forty-five seconds. Thanks, Bill. Actually, thank you greatly. It's nice to, it's nice to get some kudos once in a while, for sure. All right, moving on to appointments. F, we have none. Then G, the consent agenda. Number one, minutes of the regular council meeting as of April 10th, 2023. Number two, accounts payable and payroll through April 24th, 2023 in the amount of $2,177,375.98. Three, Freedom of Information Act FOIA report, March 2023. And four, resolution 2023-046 authorizing a workers' compensation lump sum petition in order in the amount of $35,986.04 to David DeLil. DeLil?
DeLily.
Do you need to, do you want to comment on any of that, or?
No, I think there are comments in the background.
So I would take a motion to approve the consent agenda as proposed.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman Perkins. Roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven aye.
All right, the consent agenda has been approved. Agenda item H, public hearings, we have none. And agenda item I, considerations. Consideration of a draft five-year program for annual street maintenance for the years 2024 through 2028. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderman McAdams. This is exciting. I'm sure Zack's in the back, like, can't wait to start issuing some bids for work to be done, but City Manager, you want to bring us up to speed?
I will, and I'll introduce this, and I'm sure you'll have some questions. So if City Engineer is more apt to give you the specifics and the technical answers you may desire. But I thought it was important to set the context here. The council, since I've been here anyway, and before, council's been concerned about whether we have the means to do the work that needs to be done, that people in the various wards want done, that we want done. And we're not alone in this city, in this state, in this country, and lamenting the fact that we never seem to have on an annual basis enough money to do all those things that we'd like to do. And I'll get to just where we are in the five-year plan in just a moment. But I should say that we took a sort of a warm-up on this when we did our financial plan about a year ago, and we looked at some of the same issues. Where we are now is a little more precise in what streets fit, what category, whether it's satisfactory, good, satisfactory, poor, failing, or whatever it happens to be. Because, we talked about this a little bit about a year ago, we were anticipating getting the help that we needed from other government sources to help us through DSATs, our, it's the funnel by which federal transit and transportation money comes to the city and other communities in the county. What the pavement condition index was on our streets. And so all of our streets have now been assessed in that respect. And we have the results, and our city engineer, Zack Gill, spent a lot of time going through that and trying to come up with a list. As you know, we just approved the street maintenance program for '23, so this is '24, '25, '26, '27, '28. And particularly in the next couple of years, trying to be as aggressive as we can, because, as he put in his background, which I invite everybody to look at in more detail, and as I summarized in my background, we are not gaining ground, we're not even holding our own. The money we are devoting to street maintenance this year, $2,560,000, is the largest we've done in a long time. And we're averaging around $2.2 to $2.5 million a year. But that leaves us about a million and a half short of where we need to be to hold our own. That's not gain on and elevate the street conditions to satisfactory or good. But we're not at that position right now. So what was proposed before you tonight is a $12 million program over five years. It's aggressive. The other thing we have to do with the two major sources, one of which, and the largest of which, is our local motor fuel tax, but there's also state motor fuel tax. And the state tax helps us with some other things that people never see on their streets, and that is the electricity for the streetlights. We can also use it for salt and that type of treatment of the streets on a seasonal basis. But there is a map in your background. There are more maps in the deeper background that's online, which show where we'd be if money was no object and we could pile on, you know, four or five or six million dollars a year for the next couple of years, and then hit a point where we're actually starting to cruise toward a finish point where we're sort of caught up. That's not in sight, it's not what we're proposing. We're proposing tonight to basically hit the bottom of the scale and basically go all those five. So if one is the best and five is the worst, all the fives in the next five years, plus a little bit into the fours. And that leaves you with conversation tonight and also the ongoing, never-ending debate over what can we do to get more money? And we have looked at that. Nothing significant short of increasing fees in some fashion or taxes in some fashion is going to get us there, but we may not be in a position much longer to await that. And I'm going to stop. Zack, would you like to add a few things, or should we get into some conversation? Okay, please do.
Nothing to add at all, really. We'd love to, we'd love to hear, man. I mean. And it was great. And the additional background and all the charts and all the different queries you did, that was really cool to see.
Yeah, it was meant to have some brevity to it with the executive summary and the maps that are accessible to every resident, not just our officials. So I'm here to speak to more if you have it, but generally, the gist is there, so.
Well, I appreciate the, I think you had the next four years of who's going to get work done. That's just nice, because I get that question a lot, "What about my street?" Like, oh, yeah, you know what, you're 2027. I saw it on the list that Zack gave us.
Yeah, it's, and they were meant in that way. I think if it didn't come across, the idea was, we're transitioning now to the residential areas. The previous program and previous desire had been, get the thoroughfares done, and you saw that. I wasn't here for the last five-year plan being developed. I think I came in a year after it was established, but we by and large stuck to it. Did things like North First Street, South First Street, Taylor, Seventh, and some of the major ones like that. So now we're taking a look at, let's get into people's front yards here. Let's make the last hundred feet of their drive home better, safer. So you'll see it set up as these, kind of these buckets, by and large. And again, that's, as I think I stated there, this isn't a guarantee, hey, I live at 708 X Avenue, right there, you're going to be there on this day. But we will be working in the area, and as prices fluctuate, as abilities fluctuate, those are the areas we'll target. That was the intent, so.
Should mention one thing, and Zack mentioned it in his background, I mentioned it in my background. We can do some other things from time to time. As you know, we have two bridges under reconstruction right now, or actually total removal and construction of new bridges. And when we have specially dedicated funds from other levels of government, we, of course, bring it to you, and we have a discussion about that. Eventually, there are council votes and bids and so forth. That's over and above what we've got here. This is what we do, basically, with the money that we can count on year in and year out, not for special projects, but for local, this is asphalt resurfacing, by and large.
Well, this also doesn't include, and I could be wrong, but I don't remember seeing PIECE being included in the list, but PIECE is a project outside of what we're talking here. The money that we're spending as a local community, that's a state-funded program. That is still going to happen this year.
Correct. Yes, it's, yep, yep, they're out there right now, actually working on some utility relocates. Yes, so they're, what they call, they're called FAU, stands for federal aid routes. So there are certain minor arterials, larger collectors of a certain impact, that we are qualified to spend our federal money. That's, you're familiar with DSATs, with our MPO. I'm, we're a member organization, I'm the representative of the city on several of their committees. We direct those dollars as a region. So not everyone's street can get it, right? I live on Ninth Street. Sorry, we're out of luck, that's not an FAU route, that's a small residential route. PIECE is an FAU route, Annie Glidden is an FAU route, Lucinda, which is coming up in 2024, are FAU routes. We have a 20% matching obligation, but again, we don't program those in annual street maintenance. Those are, you know, like, I did a little bit of elbowing to get Lucinda moved up in the schedule, so we need to be able to put up with our 20%, but we don't program those as robotically as available for major roads.
And on this note of streets, that might be a good thing to come to council with at some point. What's the three-year plan on those routes? Just so we all understand that, oh, Lucinda's going to get done. And if people weren't aware, that PIECE road getting done, and I know all the council has, that's going to be major. I mean, everyone coming home from Chicago and that dunk, 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 I hear it over and over and over again. That's just going to be wonderful to go from four lanes, almost to Macon, right, this year is the goal, or where are we going?
The intersection of Fairview will be widened, but then as soon as you pass through the intersection northbound, then we begin the taper.
Taper, right.
For that volume of speed, or that volume of car and that speed, it's a long taper. So the taper does come in just short of.
Almost like PIECE and 64, that kind of taper, yeah.
Right, so you'll be forced to merge shortly after the intersection.
Yeah. So we're getting there, four lanes to the bridge at some point.
Yeah. And not to digress from that, but I mean, DSATs does have what they call a tip, their transportation improvement program. I could give another presentation on that at some point, say, hey, this is what's come out of that larger regional cooperation.
I think that'd be great to do, just for all of us to be up to speed on that, as well as just the residents to understand, oh, cool, that's going to be done as well, when they're not seeing it in this detail here.
Yeah.
Okay. Counsel, questions or comments? Yes, Alderman Favor. Just got to get a word in, don't you?
So the, I don't know if you, when it comes, Taylor, Taylor Street West or South Malta Road, that one's been.
That becomes Malta Road, is it?
It was brought into the city, and now it's going back to the township, correct?
That is correct.
And then, so what's the status of the repair replacement?
I would want to speak directly for the Township Highway Commissioner, but generally, what he shared with the City Manager and I is that his intent is to reclaim jurisdiction of that road, do some spot repairs, and do some underground work in the more immediate future. I would anticipate that, you know, by this fall. And then come back the following season and do the larger, we are reconstructing this road, like a larger project, similar to, not quite as crazy as we see on PIECE, but the idea of, we're not just throwing down a thin coat, we're going to reconstruct this, so.
You're going to get a lot of, go ahead.
Yeah, just, this will come back to the council, that these are jurisdictional swaps, basically. And this is the fastest way to get that road fixed. And it doesn't create any challenges, really, in terms of jurisdiction.
Beauty is, when it comes to like government cooperation, I met with our road commissioner, Township Road Commissioner Craig Smith, and just how open he is on what makes sense for the city to continue to maintain, or what should the township maybe take over to maintain. And that really is just in a spirit of cooperation on, it's all text, it's all our dollars. So how can we use our dollars to the biggest benefit of the residents of DeKalb Township and DeKalb, the city of DeKalb as well?
There's an aspect to that, that as a township, there are state statutes, they have to be in jurisdiction of X amount of lane miles of road, otherwise they're dissolved. And so there is the desire for him to keep that appropriate level of liability, if you will, for lane miles. We annexed all of Gerla Road, right? That was hit, it went away. You know, we go up PIECE road. When we annex, we take away his lane miles. And so that affects his program and his status as well. So these are opportunities, like you said, great partnerships to keep everything in balance.
Counsel, yes, Alderman Verbic?
Great report, and thanks for your email reply today. Interesting to see that if we really wanted to catch up, it would more than double what we are projecting over the next five years. And what I look at is back to starting my first term in 2017, what the costs were back then. So again, a five-year period, more or less, wow, what a jump. So should we, I'm asking council, consider trying to accelerate responsibly how much we are investing in our streets to avoid the higher costs in the future, which are well documented, what those increases have been over the last five years. So if we can look at that, I think that would be a great approach. So if we can look at that, I think that would be a great approach to trying to reach satisfactory, whatever that means.
Yeah, I mean, I think when it comes to dispensaries, that's one of the things that closed the gap on our budget was the revenue that we're going to see from those eventually. Looking forward to that. I'm open to any creative way to accelerate our improvement on our roads and our infrastructure. Where I always get is if it comes to raising taxes, then we're going to have to have a darn good justification for it. You know, because I mean, we're driving down property taxes. I love the idea of driving down taxes rather than increasing them, but I do understand something like this, I hear about it all the time. I mean, next to probably speeding, condition of roads is a common comment that people make in our community. I take a lot of pleasure in the fact that we have tripled our expenditure, city manager Nicholas, roughly rounding up probably from previous years. So we definitely are accelerating, but as the city manager said, it's still not enough to dig us out of the hole that previous administrations put us in. I think it's going to come down to us being creative and also continuing the drive of economic development, right? Continuing the drive of getting more people in the city of DeKalb, spending sales tax money, that's going to be important. But also, and I'll probably talk about it in my closing comments, but there's a thing called LGDF, which is Local Government Distribution Fund, that the state of Illinois, there was a grand bargain back in the day when, and correct me if I'm wrong, city manager, that when they came out with the state income tax, 90 cents went to the state, 10 cents went to the municipalities based on a per capita basis. Of course, the state of Illinois, I think it was in 2011, changed that. And we're at about 6%. I was down in Springfield and this was something Illinois Municipal League was lobbying for pretty hard. And you know, the state's like, well, we gave you gaming and we gave you cannabis, so you're good, right? Well, the shortfall from 2011 is over $8 billion to municipalities in the state of Illinois. Gaming and cannabis made up about $2 billion of that, so we're still short about $6 billion. Our cut, if I remember right, is about 1.57 million. If they actually went back up to what they, what the promise was originally when they created a state income tax, if we went from our 6.1%, I think it is, up to 10%, that's 1.57 million dollars. We just closed our gap on our road issue right there. Then you get into the police and fire pension crisis that we're faced with right now. We all know, I think our property taxes are about $8 million roughly. That is completely 100% consumed in payments to the police and fire pension. This has nothing to do with our police and firemen locally. This is a pension crisis at the state level. But we're also kicking in another 1.6.
1.3 in '22 and '23 and probably another 600 plus.
So 2 million out of our general fund that we're going to have to do because of the state's infinite wisdom and how they're doing their actuarial tables and we have to be fully funded by 2040. I know the IML's lobbying and hopefully our state can come to some sort of reasonable calculation that is not going to bankrupt cities like the city of DeKalb in the future because they're trying to meet this unreasonable deadline on being fully funded for our pensions. And we're not talking about putting pensions in jeopardy by doing that either. We're just talking about we've got to be reasonable in how we're going to do that because that amount, it's 1.3 this year, it's 2 million next year, out of our general fund on top of our property taxes, then, oh, next year, it flattens out, right? No, it doesn't. It goes up another whole increment. So this is something that when we talk about increasing dollars for the roads, with the decrease in LGDF and then with the police and fire pension crisis, I don't know how we're going to do it because we're going to have to be fiscally responsible and make sure that we're meeting the obligations that the state has given us. But Alderman Verbic, I will champion any great idea that you come up with because I'm on board. I would love to get to that point. Alderman Smith.
Zach and I have had a lot of conversations, I can fill a few on this. Mainly Third Ward has a lot of our old concrete streets. I mean, Zach, you live on one. 65, are they 70 years old now?
60 plus for sure.
Yeah. I know one in particular that has the original, I know I bring it up to you, the limestone curb from, what, the 1800s maybe? No. But I know it's a challenge to fix them, but I agree with Alderman Verbic that our costs are going to go up exponentially, I think. I mean, I was trying to crunch the numbers real quick. I mean, if we were to consolidate, you know, and find a way to fund, you know, let's say another 5 million a year and pull it, I'm not sure how we'll do it. I'll leave it up to the experts. You, sir.
You'll eventually have to vote it.
Yeah, I know.
And that's, as the mayor was saying, that's the air and lies are up.
But I think at some point, you know, if we spend enough, will we get a break on our costs to be able to do more?
So, all right, here's, and you remember the financial planner?
Yeah.
If not, there were two things and they both had to do very controversial increases in various local taxes. Our home rule tax generate, for every quarter percent generates about another million dollars.
Right.
We're, but we're.
He's talking sales tax.
Sales tax, home rule sales tax.
And we're at 8% aggregate right now, right?
Yeah. So that's if you add the 5% state and all the rest of that, not counting Restumpard. So we're in parity with some of our competitive communities around us. So there's that issue and in terms of transferring, you know, dollars to another community. There's nothing quite as favorable to a jump as that, but there are other things. We talked about cannabis. Some of that, as we talked during our, a year ago, we had dedicated toward the vehicle fund of 420 and some for Fund 400, which is also for street maintenance. So those are the kinds of discussions we'll have to have. Those are the big numbers to make a difference in any given year.
Because I know the, Zach, quote me if I'm wrong, the concrete streets are about four times an asphalt street to be fixed.
Yeah, ours, if you're talking about, yeah, they were monolithically poured, so you see that the curb is actually attached to it. That makes it more, that hard for us, it's that much more disruptive. But yeah, when you're talking about having to go in, crush that in place, basically, you know, potentially haul that offsite, landfill that, come back in, now you're readdressing your base and adding asphalt, yeah, it could, it can certainly be three times, almost four times as much depending.
There are other techniques, which the engineer eventually will get to bring to you that don't involve that kind of wholesale removal.
And I'm not sure if, again, price-wise, we would, probably wouldn't want to put it back as concrete, it'd be very expensive. Again, theoretically, we get another 60 years though out of them when they're back. But again, we're talking about existing built communities now, not building a concrete street when no one lives on it, letting it cure for 14 days. Now it's, hi, I'm home from soccer practice, there's wet cement in my whole block, you know? So it's probably not even feasible for those dense residential neighborhoods to put concrete back.
But then, and I agree with Alderman Verbic, again, maybe, I mean, I'd be willing to discuss and throw some ideas. I mean, I don't know if I've got the, other than being here forever, I think Mr. Callahan was probably the same way, you know, we, I just don't know what to do with the streets, and I'm sure you don't either. And it's like, then I got thinking today was, once we pull up the concrete, all the 65-year-old streets, Brian's not here, but water mains become a potential issue.
To think about it, doing it cheaper with the streak gone.
Right.
Also, there's sidewalks and curb repairs and alley repairs. So I think sooner than later we'll get to this conversation, but not tonight. Tonight we can say we've got a nice, nice study.
No, I agree.
And it's a massive increase from what we've been doing.
But yeah.
And that's something, sorry, Alderman Smith.
Okay.
Oh, but that's something we need to constantly communicate to the residents of the city, that we have roughly tripled the amount that we're spending on resurfacing our roads at this point. So that's a huge increase. For me, the thought of raising taxes and stuff, like I said, I'm going to fight that one pretty hard, but I think we can get really creative on additional revenue streams. What does that mean? What kind of, and city manager and I were talking about this today, what kind of incentivization package could we offer for someone to buy twins, right? Sales tax, liquor license, permit fees. I mean, there's things that we can do that become substantial for an entrepreneur that's looking to start, that we could take off the top. And when we look at, we're not getting it already, so why not, almost like how we do property tax abatements, what if we came up with a waiver of six months or a year or something in order to incentivize them? Then after that year, we've got additional sales tax, additional food and liquor tax coming on board with that, as well as just maintaining, and this is what's so important for city staff, maintaining this idea of being business friendly, right? The more businesses we attract, the more people they're going to employ, the more they're going to, people are going to spend at their establishment, that's more sales tax. And then figuring out how we get a developer to actually build the next subdivision finally in the city of DeKalb. How can we work with our taxing bodies to incentivize that? How can we get more people here spending dollars and we can generate sales tax and motor fuel tax based off of that? That's, I think, where we could get really creative and make a significant impact without putting any of the burden on the individual taxpayer. And that's the conversation that I can't wait to have and those ideas, I hope are going to flow from council members and especially when we come up with one, the support's going to be there when the vote actually happens. Anything else, city manager?
No, sir.
What about you all? Yes, Alderman Verbic.
Great report. And want to point out one thing though, because there's two levels really, you've got the level that's in the agenda. And then if you click on the link, it's your report. And your report's the one that has a lot of detail of the status of different streets and the underlying thought behind why it's in a certain year. Great detail.
Yeah. My only question then is if there aren't any, you know, revisions required to this, then I would like to put this up on the city website for the public to have access to in perpetuity.
Yeah, Alderman Smith?
Yeah, just to close for both of you, there was, it was more of like, what are we going to do? I mean, you know, and I think both of you know, I really appreciate this. Zach, business expert, I mean, we've talked, I, you know, as I go to DSTats all the time, as you know, so I'm kind of ahead of the game on a little bit of it. But I really appreciate it. It gives everybody to understand that we've spent a lot of money in the last few years and prior to that, there was not a lot of money spent on roads and now we're behind. So, but really thank you to both of you for this.
Thank you.
And no, I don't want to raise taxes, mayor.
I know. I don't think anyone here does, and I believe that. Any other comments? Oh, Alderman Favor?
I was just going to ask.
Hang on.
Well, it's not, actually, it'll be back to Bill, so you can.
You know we'll call you back up. You might as well just stay.
I was just going to, you know, because the next largest chunk that comes out is for the electricity and for the street lighting and things, I was wondering, two things. One, have we done an electric audit? I think I talked with Zach and we talked about it might be six months or 12 months before a street light's put up. I don't know if they start billing us right away before that street light's put up. The second question is, is there potentially federal money to do a conversion like we did in Annie Gliddon North to go to LED lighting? And perhaps with, you know, those two, instead of saving 500,000, we might maybe cut the bill in half or we might.
Yeah, we, I'll take the second one first and then maybe if Brian here, then, no. Maybe Zach can help with that audit question, but we avail ourselves, all the departments are always looking for grant opportunities and so we avail ourselves of what is available. It's very competitive now. ComEd has been the source of some of these programs over the years and we're very much engaged with ComEd on a variety of topics and this is something that can easily fit into the conversation. It's not like we haven't thought about it, but lately the conversation has been about power and availability and so forth.
Didn't we just do like 250 street lights or something last summer, I think? I mean, we've been swapping out to LED.
We have. And we did a major one, what Alderman Favor was talking about about four years ago, extraordinary amount of lights, most in the Knowles and some other places. There were 600 or something like that. And then we had some debate about whether there was too much blue light and remember, and then ComEd came back in and made some change outs, but the price is right.
Something to comment on? Zach?
Yeah, I understand. So again, we're not really putting up a ton of new street lights, right? They're kind of one-offs here and there. By and large, I think it's a pretty fair transaction. We make the request, they come out and I have to sign off on an authorization then, and they build a certain rate for those. But I don't think there's any games where, oh, let's charge them an extra 30 days here. It's kind of, they're out there doing the work. When it goes live, we sign off and we get that, then it always gets added into whatever account, which is usually a large batch account with the other streetlights, so. And ComEd has been switching to LED on their own, so I would think we would see those savings if their supply is going down. The other end of that is we do lease that equipment from them though. They don't put those lights up on the poles out of the goodness of their heart. We pay our bill to lease the equipment besides to energize them to light, so that's where a lot of the funding goes to fit.
Okay, thank you.
I'm glad you brought it up though. We meet with ComEd representatives. It seems like every week Nick Escobar is at some event or some meeting, but I'll definitely bring it up with him to see if there's another program in 2023 that we may not be aware of. But they're pretty on top of that with us, which is great. They've been a good partner. Any other comments or questions? Awesome discussion. Nice work, sir. Looking forward to seeing all the orange cones and all the construction going on.
Start putting out traffic control for this year's program, so that's going to begin in the Knowles neighborhood again, work its way up through Green Acres and then swing back around through Tilton Park and that area. So we're back into it this year.
And I brought it up over and over and over again. I know we made some signs, but I would really like to see signs in the beginning of each entry point to construction that says progress is promised. It's a real nice reminder for people when they're agitated by the second construct, or second season we have, winter and winter season and construction season, that, oh yeah, I want my roads to get done. Look what the city's doing. They're doing the roads.
I think Andy has those signs. I'll work with him on those. And we are, the mailings go out this week. I did have those postcards made. I don't know if anyone has seen those or maybe been on a road that gets work. They're, it's a simple postcard, kind of has some constructional design on it, says roadwork ahead and just alerts people that there is work coming and that you can partner with the city or the standardary district, if you have some needs for your own underground utilities, we can partner with you and that. So everyone gets a mail alert, so hopefully that is a little bit of.
All right. Thanks, city engineer Bill.
Fantastic, thank you.
So it's a consideration, you're just wanting us to, you're letting us know and we're all nodding our head, this is awesome.
Well, we're posting and.
Go for it.
It's, yeah, I just think unless you have objections, that we'll consider this our plan for now. And I said, and Zach would agree, the cycle, the free sauce cycle that hits us repeatedly during the course of, you know, nine months out of the year, will have an effect on roads and some things blow up and other things settle. And so there's a little bit of horse trading every year, but the greater part of what we do is planned out as best we can. So we'll bring to you obviously every contract, you'll get to see everything that we're doing. You can ask, where does this fit into the plan? Is this more or less about the same?
So the letting begins now?
Yeah.
After this, okay. All right, moving on to agenda item J, number one, Resolution 2023-047 authorizing a six-month extension through September 19th, 2023 of the Strong Communities Grant from the Illinois Housing Development Authority in the amount of $100,000 for reimbursement of city expenditures related to the demolition of three condemned residential properties. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So. Second?
Move by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman McAdams, city manager.
So this is a cut from a much larger program available to communities across the state and through HUD eventually throughout the country, targeted where there are vacant properties, vacant and distressed properties, abandoned properties, that windows broken, it's a broken glass approach, that it wouldn't be better if we could either remove, fix them, and if there's nobody to fix them, remove them, make them available for others and including people who have limited means, but maybe there are other programs can help them build their first house or sometimes it's multifamily housing. But in this case, it's scattered site, we got $100,000 in '21. This is a government program, so it takes a little while, we got to process it. It also, we have to have clearly given whoever might be the owner, and oftentimes it's a bank that's taken them through foreclosure and we have to work with the bank and the various real estate departments and the banks and sometimes it takes up to a year. We have, we're approaching a deadline. We got $100,000 originally. We've spent $37,000. We'd like to spend all or most of the remaining $63,000. We've asked for, we ask you to allow us to ask for another six months. We think we can get that done this summer.
Counsel, questions, comments? Hearing none, roll call please.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven-Eyed.
Resolution 2023-047 passes. Number two, resolution 2023-048, authorizing an agreement for construction engineering services with Fairgram and Associates LLC for the 2023 general street maintenance program with a fee not to exceed $163,600. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Move by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Faver, city manager.
Thank you. Our city engineer is superhuman, but he can't do everything all the time when it comes to streets and our built.
What?
Well, I know, I know. Been working on it, but, and as you recall from the project downtown last year, there was supervision every day, construction inspection and then also the management, there are payout requests and, you know, final lien waivers and the whole. And we do that with our street maintenance program and we usually choose, we recommend a choice from our pre-approved list, a shortlist of engineering firms that have done work in our area in the past. We reordered that, I guess we opened it up a couple of years ago, so it's a fresh list. It'll go for another couple of years and then we'll go out again, but Fairgram has done a very good job for us. They were key in the downtown last year. We feel they, they got a lot of kudos for what they were able to do and maintain businesses open and really minimize customer complaints and driver complaints. So, their proposed fee is less than we would have budgeted in terms of the usual market percentage of the project cost and we recommend your approval.
Questions or comments, counsel? All joking aside, Zach, you know, we give you lots of love. We know how hard you're working. It's a Herculean effort. Really appreciate all your hard work and I know you worked heavy with Brian Faver and Andy Rye and the city manager. So, yeah, all joking aside, we love the work that you do and understand that you need additional help, so. Hearing, oh, Alderman McAdams.
And I just want to say, every single time I came downtown while we were doing the road, you were there.
Yeah.
Every single time. I don't think there was, I cannot recall a single time where you weren't out, already out on the street doing something, so.
The buck stops here, so.
Love the attitude.
Don't go any further with this.
That's getting too, all right, all right, all right. We'll move on, we'll move on. Hearing no other comments. All right, roll call please.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven-Eyed.
Resolution 2023-048 passes. Number three, resolution 2023-049, approving a supplemental sum of $398,600 of motor fuel tax funds for maintaining various streets and highways under the applicable provisions of the Illinois Highway Code, section 23-50s-20s-GM, from January 1st, 2023 through December 31st, 2023. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second. Move by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman McAdams, city manager.
So, we have a partnership with the state of Illinois, which we're very happy to have and we share our annual projection of spending on those things that they participate in and have some authority over. Our budget did not anticipate some of the decisions that were made on the 10th for good reason and they were recommended by staff, two of which were to add a total of $398,600 to our proposed allocation under the contract that went to current contracting of that. $360,000 was dedicated for actual construction costs, another $38,600 for construction engineering fees. So, we have to let the state know, we have a bigger budget now. It's a little bit bigger than it was when we passed our fiscal year budget. That's what this resolution is about.
Counsel, questions, comments? Hearing and seeing none, roll call please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven-Eyed.
Resolution 2023-049 passes. Number four, resolution 2023-050, approving a hospitality liquor license for volume services and Inc., DBA doing business as Sedexo Live for the Northern Illinois University Convocation Center located at 1525 West Lincoln Highway. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second. Move by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Faver, city manager.
Thank you, mayor. And this will sound similar to what the next resolution is about. The vendor that's got the liquor license for the Convos Center has changed the name by which it will be doing business at the Convos Center, so these licenses are not transferable, so we have to come back to you. In this case, we vetted, it's basically common ownership and, but it's their choice to change their identification and so we recommend approval of this initial issuance fee and license.
Counsel, questions, comments? Standard business, hearing none, roll call please.
Favor?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven-Eyed.
Resolution 2023-050 passes. Number five, resolution 2023-051, approving a hospitality liquor license for Volume Services Incorporated, DBA Sedexo Live for the Northern Illinois University Stadium located at 1245 Stadium Drive. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Move by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Faver, city manager.
Thank you. As the mayor read in the title, the same company is looking to be responsible for alcoholic beverage services at our stadium on Northern Illinois University's campus and for the same reasons, we recommend your approval.
Counsel, questions or comments? Hearing and seeing none, roll call please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven-Eyed.
Resolution 2023-051 passes. Number six, resolution 2023-052, approving a restaurant low alcohol by volume liquor license for Rajepi LLC, DBA Xana's Wood Fire Pizza located at 1406 Sycamore Road, Suite A. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Move by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman McAdams. How bad did I pronounce that?
Not bad.
Okay. Not bad. That's code for, oof. All right. City manager.
We'll just stick with Xana's Wood Fire Pizza. That's what they're doing business in. So, again, this is, on Sycamore Road, where the Flappies used to be, across from, you know, the Hopkins Park complex, there have been licenses in that area before. This is a restaurant low alcohol by volume liquor license and they wish to serve to their patrons and we have vetted this at the staff level and they currently hold a fire life safety license, so we're ready to recommend it to you.
Counsel, questions, comments? Alderman Smith?
Bill, just, you want to explain the low volume license?
No.
Okay. Well, it's not the full, because I'm in there a lot, so I know people ask.
Wine and beer?
Yeah, just wine and beer.
No spirits, yeah.
Yeah. My wife will be very, my wife will be very happy.
Hearing none, roll call please.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven-Eyed.
Resolution 2023-052 passes. Number seven, resolution 2023-053, approving a retail tobacco store license for the Smoke Shop NIU 818 Incorporated, DBA The Smoke Shop located at 818 West Lincoln Highway, Suite 3. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Move by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Faver, city manager.
So, different commodity, we're talking about tobacco here. Some of the same things apply at the staff level. We, there are licenses that have to be reviewed by a police department and other staff departments and a fire life safety license has to be issued. They have paid for the fire life safety license. We recommend their approval and with the approval, then they can proceed to pay the issuance fee of $3,735.
Counsel, questions, comments? Hearing none, roll call please.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven-Eyed.
Resolution 2023-05.
Mayor, I should mention, this was a smoke shop before in case people are saying, well, it's pretty easily discussed and decided, but it's been there. This is a new owner for the existing smoke shop.
Yeah, actually, thanks for the clarification. On that note, resolution 2023-053 passes. Moving on to K, ordinance is second reading, we have none. Agenda item L, ordinance is first reading, number one, ordinance 2023-018, amending the fiscal year-end, December 31st, 2022 budget. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second. Move by Alderman Faver, seconded by Alderman McAdams, city manager.
Thank you. I want to thank Carrie Ditman, our finance director, for preparing the background for this. She always does a very thorough background on a shortlist of changes we'd like to make in the FY '22 budget year, which obviously ended on December 31st of '22, but we're in the audit process right now and finishing the fieldwork and we've noticed as we do, I mean, half a dozen times here, which is a pretty, pretty short list, a few things that need to be changed, mostly because of decisions that were made by, recommended by the staff, decided by the council in the best interest of the general public. The net here difference to the general fund or overall for all funds is about $7,600. We recommend your approval.
We love those, that quote, "There is no net effect." Those are wonderful to read. Comments or questions, counsel? Finance director Ditman, as always, love the I's dotted, T's crossed. We know to always expect that from your department. All right, roll call please.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven-Eyed.
Ordinance 2023-018 passes on first reading. I would take a motion to waive second reading?
So moved.
Second.
Move by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Perkins. Any other comments or questions? Hearing seeing none, a roll call please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven-Eyed.
Second reading has been waived for ordinance 2023-018, which moves us into M, Reports and Communications. Alderwoman Larson, you want to kick us off?
I had another great week because I was at the fire department. We had another new fireman join us, number 275, and some other internal promotions and penings and so I just always am so pleased that the new kid on the block picked DeKalb and the guys who have the experience, they're staying with DeKalb and that just makes my week.
Alderman Perkins?
No report.
Alderman Verbic?
No report.
Alderman Faver?
So, because I won't be here, the first Sunday in June is going to be the Experimental Aircraft Association Pancake Breakfast at the airport and then the Saturday before that, on the 4th, I believe, is going to be Young Eagles, which is flights for pre-airplane rides for children eight years and older. So, come on out to the airport, see what it's all about.
Alderman McAdams?
No report.
Alderman Smith?
No report.
Mine, I mentioned it briefly, so I won't belabor the fact, I was at, in Springfield three days last week, last week, in part to advocate with our state lobbyists on behalf of the City of DeKalb, but the main reason was I'm on the Board of Directors for the Illinois Municipal League and I mentioned LGDF. Again, when we talk about LGDF and we talk about the police and fire pension crisis, those two getting solved by the state of Illinois, who continues to see increased revenue, they're balancing their budget and they're able to contribute billions of dollars to their surplus, which is a great thing and it's helping them increase their bond rating, which is awesome. The state's being financially responsible, yet they're ignoring what's going on at the municipal level. And it's great, we have some wonderful state reps like state rep Yednok, state Senator Sue Resin, state rep Jeff Keiker, who advocate on our behalf, but this is something that we're going to have to talk about more and more and I think the City of DeKalb's going to have to be more and more vocal on this, because those shortcomings, the state is able to balance their budget and do great things going forward, but again, it's at the cost of us and we need to start talking a little bit louder about that to be able to address the shortcomings that we have and that we're going to have when it comes to our infrastructure. And I think there was 791 unfunded mandates that are being put forth. Lead pipe is a perfect example of that. The state of Illinois said we need to remove it. Who wouldn't disagree with that? Public safety, 100% on board. It's $8 billion. Did $1 come from the state of Illinois? No. But they gave us a date that we need to have it done by. So, those are the things that decisions have to be weighed and if that is a priority of our state legislature, then they need to make sure municipalities have the mechanism for funding in order to support that and they lack that. And that's why we're in the situation that we're in on so many of the issues that we have right now because of the state of Illinois. So, at the IML, it was great. I was able to attend a public hearing, was actually a witness for a testimony on LGDF to our state legislature and I got to give a guy named Representative Anthony DeLuca a lot of credit. He is one of our state reps that is championing this whole restoring LGD back from 6.1% to 10% and he is really pounding that drum over and over again, as well as the IML Executive Director Brad Cole and the IML Board of Directors, which is great. Had a, had a great opportunity. I mean, we did a joint press conference with the governor two weeks ago, three weeks ago or something, he was out here at Northern, so got to corner him for about five minutes on some issues that we've got going forward in the City of DeKalb, but then the governor's mansion, there was a reception there and there was only about 20 of us that attended, which was great, so got to corner the governor again, advocate on the issues I'm talking about right now, as well as just constantly remind him about, I think per capita, some of the most, most of the economic development happening in the state of Illinois, per capita is happening right now in the City of DeKalb. So, I just want to always make sure we're on that guy's radar since he's got a little[1536.18]